Alrighty, where do I live?
Right there.
Here?
No, right here.
Okay.
No, right there.
Well, there we go.
It has, uh, speakers.
I have a name tag and everything.
I know.
Official staff. Ever seen this many people at a board meeting? Okay. Started a business, ended a business, went back to Walmart. That's how you lose weight, man. How was JB Hines? Crazy.
He was Walmart.
I was left two days. He can't, he doesn't want me. Alright.
Adrian is, uh, I think she's online.
Adrian, yeah, she's, yeah, she's got them, uh, covering the. So we have everybody? I need a gavel. I've got to bang something on the table. I said, I need a gavel, I'm going to call to order.
Well, just in my mind.
Oh, okay. I can just bang my name, say I'm a table.
I was in procurement.
Okay, thank you. I dealt with, uh, Eddie Clark.
This is your, hi.
Hi.
Your packet for this evening?
Thank you.
Uh-huh, this is the, uh, agenda. Most of this is not, this is the minutes from the last meeting.
I was talking to him.
And the handouts are back here for the, for tonight. Any questions, you can call her.
Okay.
Oh, good. I might keep us.
And we don't know if Adrian is coming. I didn't.
No, she can't, she's going to be online, yeah. Please don't.
I don't want to, I don't, I couldn't handle.
I'm not sure if we can hear them. Adrian and Tony, are you guys able to hear us right now?
You still have your foot thing.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great, good. Adrian, are you on there as well? Is she there? I couldn't hear her. She is? Yeah. Okay, it's really quiet. How does it go?
Yeah.
Four. Oh.
Yeah, I had a friend who, uh, I've been doing this for six years.
Right.
Yeah. There's probably twenty years of worrying still about how you're.
No.
No.
I never have been, um, happy when I'm losing to a house in all country or, yeah, forty thousand happy every day for about three weeks. Well, I really hope it works.
She's not concerned, is she?
Yeah. You know, you gotta throw all that back in there. So, like, I have the little D for, I've been using it. I've started down to walk, and I've got all.
We had one of our elementary kids who's on the new roller.
I also provide me for, and when I'm happy with you, it's, it's free. They didn't follow through with me.
Are you here?
Yeah.
That's great.
So.
Well, I think we're about to turn.
Hello, Kevin.
So we had six folks sign up.
Okay.
Oh.
Did we have any?
Yeah, there's a list. Uh, I think this is it right here.
Oh, perfect, great.
Um, it's in order of speaking, in other words, the earliest to last.
Okay.
If someone, you know, if the sixth person, if some, one of the five, first five doesn't, doesn't speak, then number six.
Is there a time limit for these guests?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, thank you. Okay. I'll get out my phone.
As a secretary, I feel like I should do something.
Why don't you, why don't you?
I don't manage that.
Maybe it'll be our official time.
Oh, is that right?
As a secretary treasurer, I feel like it's something I could do. If I'm not taking notes, they can at least be kind people.
And then you say, "Thank you very much."
Timer, three, no.
Oh, um.
Hey, did somebody just join the call?
Is that somebody? It's showing. He's on you.
Then he must have rejoined, yeah, he was already on.
Have we talked to you about calling roll for it?
About.
Calling roll?
Yeah, I saw that as, as one of the roll calls here.
Yeah, uh, but in the past, it's just been, you know, people who are, who are showing them. Let's, I thought that it was probably due to his idea of being a roll call, and then she calls the roll.
I'm going to do it like we do for Zoom. Everybody's got to say their name.
The intro votes is what?
Yes.
So you're saying she, she wants to call roll?
Yeah.
Oh, Debbie wants.
So we're just really clear.
Yeah, sounds great.
Sometimes you can't.
Sounds good. Yeah, that's a celebration, we'll get to call to order, yeah. Uh, she was just right, she's behind the pool right there. Holy crap. There's a lot of people. Did our guests have a, have a mic on there? Um, probably need to bring them up here. Alright guys, everybody, thank you for coming tonight. We're going to go ahead and call to order right now, and go ahead and get things started, okay? Thank you very much. Okay, so, uh, first things first, we're going to go ahead and take our roll call. Debbie, would you mind?
Jeff Huddycutt?
I'm here.
Um, Nate Frye?
Present.
Uh, Dr. Riley?
Present.
Um, Howard Alstorf?
Here.
Leslie Pope?
Here.
Richard Burley?
Here.
Howell, and, uh, Tony Beersley?
Here.
Adrian Jackson?
Here.
Here.
All present.
Okay, thank you, Debbie. Um, we're going to go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Where's the video?
There we go, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, everyone, thank you for joining us tonight. We're going to start off tonight's agenda with comments from the public. Uh, as normal, we have five people that have signed up to speak. Each person will be entitled to three minutes, um, for anything they'd like to address the board with. Uh, first on the list, we have, uh, Tony Mathers. Is Tony Mathers here?
Here.
Okay. I know, I don't think we have a mic, so I guess right down here would be great.
Yeah.
Sorry? Oh, there is one, great.
The mic, the microphone there.
You're good.
Okay.
Yep.
Wrote this like six different times over the last month. So, I chose to come here to speak at the last month's meeting, uh, with a plea of compassion because, like, you know, I, I knew it would fall on deaf ears. Compassion, to me, is always the answer. I don't want to fight you or anyone. All the parents and the students want is to work together to build a small, amazing school. And that's it. We need to work together. But after all the events of last month, I don't think there's any hope for unity, not with you. Just wait until everyone finds out about the tour you gave at the elementary school last week. People here have made the mistake in assuming that there are matters up for debate. And that, that's not the kind of man you are. Your mind is made up, and any effort to change it would only be a waste. You were chosen to be the leader, and you're not one. You don't care for those in your charge, you patronize us, and you only seek to further your own agenda. You are a taker. Takers kiss up and kick down. But we, the students, the parents, and the faculty are very good at punching them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, next we have Herb Vogel. Let me know when you're ready, Herb, and I'll start the timer, okay? Again, three minutes, Herb.
Yeah, I can't keep it as short as ten. Um, I just wanted to correct some comments that have been made over the last couple of years. Um, last May, the infamous school board meeting, Andy's out here real quick.
I'm sorry, there's only two copies.
Um, everybody pretended like sports through, uh, the school was a big shock that was going through the rack, but yet, September twenty eighteen, it was divided, decided by this board, that, that's how it was going to operate. Um, statements like, "Sports should go through the rack," well, anybody who's playing high school sports, there is nobody at the rack. Their schools are bound by the triple A, they cannot play outside of their teams. Um, so that's not an option. Um, pickup games has also been mentioned. Well, that's dangerous. Do you really want your fourteen and fifteen-year-old daughters and sons playing pickup games with adults at the rack? That, I mean, that's just, doesn't make sense. Um, comments were made that at lunchtime, kids are clicking for the first time because of athletics. Um, do you not think that the dancers sit together, and the guitar players sit together, and the artists sit together? Clicks will always happen when kids or adults have common interests. It's not necessarily a bad thing if you handle it correctly. Um, another board member said, "Well, we should go back to being an art school and get rid of sports." Well, if you watched the commencement the other night and you watched the slideshow, eighty percent of these kids are going on to seek degrees in something other than arts. This is a small charter school. We came here because of people like Mr. Young, Mrs. Dale, Mr. Martin, good teachers, small school atmosphere. But if you try to limit yourself to only an art school, you are not doing these kids, uh, the, the service that they deserve. Um, before you had sports, there was no waitlist for high schools. You were losing kids right and left as soon as they hit junior high. Uh, that was covered in last May's school board meeting also. Um, Mr. Young did a presentation that sports affects a hundred and ninety participants at the school. Um, and I just want to quote some of your competitors. Haas Hall, one of the best college preparatory schools in Arkansas. We believe that athletic competition is integral to a well-balanced education. Statean School, in addition to robust physical education and wellness curriculum, we offer a number of theme and individual sports that give students the opportunity to test their athleticism in healthy competitions that build character, school spirit, and a variety of cognitive skills. So, I, I just want to say that athletics benefits kids of all ages. It teaches leadership, it teaches self-discipline, time management. Um, it was brought up that the kids missed, uh, an early checkout. Well, basketball's a five-month season from November to February, and there were eight, uh, sorry, six hours of early checkout for the entire season. Mr. Skelton pointed out that because of COVID, it was A-B, A-B. So yes, that happens to be in the same class, but in a normal season, that means that kid is missing three hours in a single class over a five- to six-month period. Uh, just be careful what you say, right? Stop quoting things because then it gets quoted again and again for two years, right? So that's, alright, so.
Hey, next we have Kenneth Parks.
I'll follow his reading.
Okay. Sure thing.
Good evening, I'm a parent of two Arkansas Arts Academy students. I'm a volunteer. My formal name is the Reverend Dr. Kenneth T. Parks, Ph.D., Masters of Divinity. For thirty-three years, I've been an ordained Episcopal priest and served the board, on the Board of Trustees at the Uni, University of the South in Swanee. But before I was ordained for thirteen years, I was the scene designer, technical director, the speech and theater department at Arkansas State University. My Ph.D. dissertation studied the fine arts colleges and universities in America. There are three universal characteristics of those schools. Number one, the students who come to them have already participated in their art form. They know the language, they know in varying degrees, the direction, and they know how to function as a team. They know how to work together. Number two, they're above average in intelligence, they could complete any degree program. And number three, they have participated in an athletic program at some point in their life. Many of those students are on athletic scholarships at their university. All art includes teamwork. It's a rare Lone Ranger that is successful and a representative of being an art. Every choir director could speak about the individual in the choir that constantly oversees everybody all the time. The Lone Ranger is not an arts. I sincerely believe that you cannot artificially separate art from academics, from athletics. They form a natural bond that should not be broken or even neglected. Both of my great nieces are first, were first-team All-Georgia Soccer Team. Attended college, received their Actors Guild credentials. They have been in pilot TV series, commercials. One of them wrote an exercise guild book for actresses and models. Her sister joined the writing team for Just Judy, and you thought that that was spontaneous. She wrote and starred in an episode of Room 101, and is currently a part of a movie script writing team. The fourth characteristic I discovered through the graceful work of Principal Matt Young. Matt literally saved our family, he literally saved our grandchildren. My legal children's lives. He tirelessly and patiently directed us in the right people, that took them out of unstable conditions, provided accurate diagnosis, and provided them now with a new direction in life. Many, many families have benefited from his compassion, his patience, and his direction in this community. He is beloved, but he earned that. The north, a fourth characteristic, as the alphabet student, as I call them, in public schools, they're identified by the condition of ADHD, PTSD, Anxiety Syndrome, and et cetera. But here, they are not mocked.
Can I stop you for one second? Board, we're, we're past time with, with Reverend Parks, are you guys okay letting him finish his thought? Yeah. Thank you. No, it's okay, I just want to make sure that we're.
The last piece is that here, they are diamonds, they're identified by the team, or they're art, they're not picked on. I know that. Finally, thank you for one minute more. The most controversial musical post-World War II musical was what? Whether it was South Pacific. And that signature song was "You Have To Be Carefully Told." We need artists today. Go home, Google it, look at the words, and you'll understand why we have Arkansas Arts Academy. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Parks. Next we have Laney Adam.
I am privileged to speak on behalf of my colleagues at the K-6 campus where I teach fourth grade, as well as our parent community, as I have a kindergartner and third grader at our school. I'm here to speak about the morale and culture of our wonderful local campus on Twelfth Street. Our school has a history of a tumultuous past, frequent leadership changes, staff retention and recruiting problems, and a stagnant student population size. There were constant leadership changes, until about five years ago, when Matt Young brought his experience, lively spirit, and leadership to the K-6 campus. The elementary building had not maintained the same principle for more than a three-year stretch, and most of the administrators only served one to two years before leaving the school. There was fear and uncertainty amongst the staff. Over the course of the past five years, under the leadership of Matt Young, the K-6 campus has flourished. Teacher retention and recruitment has improved, families are clamoring to get their students into our school, and the overall reputation of Arkansas Arts Academy has made it one of the top-notch schools in the area. Mr. Young, along with the leadership of Mr. Skelton, who joined our staff four years ago, has made this a great place to work and a great place for kids to learn. As leaders, they support us both professionally and personally. They recognize that we have our own families, but that together, we're a part of the Arkansas Arts Academy family. They encourage us to be our best selves professionally and serve our students with fidelity while still taking care of our own personal needs and well-being. These two men are the type of strong leaders who aren't afraid to support and grow their people. They aren't threatened by the success of others, but encourage those around them to thrive. Yet when we falter, as we inevitably do, we do so together. And when we grow and improve, Mr. Young and Mr. Skelton are the last people to take that credit. They're the type of leaders that always put others first. They would be the first to tell you that the teachers, students, and parents are what make this school great. That kind of selflessness and servant leadership is difficult to find, and I would argue, impossible to teach. Few leaders can hold a candle to the charismatic leadership of Mr. Young and the gentle wisdom of Mr. Skelton. Yet recently, the stability, consistency, and trust that has been built on the K-6 campus has begun to topple. Certainly, we've operated in crisis mode for parts of the past year due to the unprecedented pandemic. Mr. Young, Mr. Skelton, and Nurse Katie have guided us through this difficult year with great poise and strength. Despite their leadership, there's been a sense of fear, control, and trepidation that's permeated our halls. Lack of communication and transparency seem to have become the norm from the district. Many staff have noted that on a number of occasions, we have learned of important school announcements and changes as parents before being informed as staff. Instead of being included in decision-making and communicated with directly, we're sometimes the last to find out. Recently, leaders of another local charter school, whose online growth plan includes the acquisition of a lower and upper-level Rogers Benningville School, was given a tour of our school without any of our building leadership present. As you can imagine, the lack of communication and transparency we've been experiencing, coupled with the questions raised by the presence of these unexpected visitors, has led staff to no good conclusions. I could provide further examples, but I know I'm out of time. One last word, we as a staff do not feel that we are being engaged as key stakeholders in the direction of our school. Parents and staff alike seek more transparency and communication and want to be included in fulfilling the vision and mission of our school. We want our voices to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Laney. Next we have Andy Schuster.
I am here to speak on behalf of my son, Thomas Schuster, and the advantages Arkansas Arts Academy has given him. He wasn't succeeding in a large public school setting. The small class sizes have given him the freedom to express himself, uh, whether it be Mrs. Price's art class and all the other music classes that have given him opportunities to strengthen his fine motor skill. Although I am an educator, tonight I speak to you as a parent. I worked and have worked under many administrators and don't envy their positions. In fact, that's probably why I'm still a teacher today. I speak tonight in support of one such administrator from a parent's point of view. This administrator, Mr. Young, supports arts education, academic growth, and emotional growth. Mr. Young sees value in each student's strengths and attempts to strengthen their weaknesses to give them the best start in life that he can. Two years ago, there was a tremendous differential in our son's test scores between reading and math. Mr. Young analyzed the data at the elementary level and quickly assigned teachers to work strategically with small groups in reading and math intervention. Our son was able to catch up in these small ratios of teacher-to-student groups and improve in math to close his gaps. This past school year, Tom, Tommy, we call him Tommy, he was diagnosed with ADHD, thus requiring a 504 plan. Mr. Young sat down with us early on in the school year and explained what could be done to help our son inside the classroom and in state testing settings. We understood what 504 plans are, but didn't fully understand the steps required to get one. A team was put together at Mr. Young's guidance, and soon our son was being tested in multiple areas, to which resulted in testing accommodations that are now to his benefit. On the multiple occasions that I've been to Arkansas Arts Academy through various events, school personnel has welcomed me and my family with smiling faces and receptive attitudes. A positive school climate begins at the top with its administration and gets filtered down to teachers, students, and families. Because of its small size, Arkansas Arts Academy is able to get to know its families on a personal basis and make strong connections throughout the students' lives while attending Arkansas Arts Academy. One can tell instantly when they walk into any school building whether the culture is welcoming or closed off. Mr. Young is a big part of why families start and stay at Arkansas Arts Academy because of that climate that he has created. Tommy's story is not an exception at this school, but we think an example of the majority of the students whose parents choose to send their kids to Arkansas Arts Academy. Thank you very much for taking your time tonight to listen to me.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Schuster. Uh, next up, I apologize for the pronunciation, uh, we have Tafiq Abahamdan. Did I say that right? Close, alright.
Um, unfortunately, I didn't prepare anything, I just wanted to share a couple of comments. Um, I have three children at Arkansas Arts Academy, uh, two of them are currently at the elementary campus and one at the high school campus, all of which have started, um, with, in kindergarten. Um, after the second year, when my oldest Jude was apparently seventh grader, after her second year, we almost pulled her out of the school. There was a change in leadership, and that's when Mr. Young came, um, and took over the elementary campus. And, um, we basically sat down and talked, and said, "We're going to give it one year and see what happens." And the way that Mr. Young has turned around this school is unbelievable. Um, the addition of, the, the focus of athletics, in addition to the, um, the focus on arts, is what makes my kids well-rounded in, in everything. Um, all of, all three of my daughters are dancers, gymnasts, basketball players, uh, archers. They are able to do all that at Arkansas Arts Academy. There is nowhere else in this state that offers them that, and that's what makes them the tough girls that they are today. I'm going to put that aside, I'm going to move towards talking about Mr. Young. Mr. Young, the way that he's turned around this school is just, I mean, you've heard a lot of people talk about it, I'm not going to go into a lot of details. This man knows every student on his campus by name, greets them by name. Knows the parents by name. I have, um, Mr. Burles joined the school last year, first time I've seen you, never heard anything from you, have not seen a single email direct, talking to the, the parents about the pandemic that we're going through, what the school's trying to do, none of that came directly from you. Because of the involvement of my kids in all the activities, I'm here for dance, um, recitals, band, uh, basketball games, never seen you present in any one of those. To me, as if you don't care about what goes on in the school. The other thing I want to address about is some major decisions that have been put on the board's agenda the last month before a change in the board. on the board's agenda the last month before a change in the board. There are two board members that have lost their seats on this board, and I believe should not vote on some major decisions that are being made in today's board meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tafiq. That concludes our comments from the public. Moving on to the next item on our agenda would be approving our minutes from our May meeting and special meeting, of which are attached. So, Board, I guess I'll take a second to review that. Let me, do we not have them?
You're the only one that has them.
Oh, I'm the only one that has them. Oh, well, that's great.
It was sent out as an email last week.
Got it. So, did everybody have a chance to review an email? Any questions, any objections? If not, can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Sorry? You good? Okay. Uh, let's see, May financials, attachment number two. Nate, can you care to comment on the activity from the finance committee this?
We didn't have it.
We didn't have one.
Right. Yeah, so we, we, everything looks about the same as it was. Everything's looking good. Financials are good. We're looking to end the year with over $500,000 left in the bank, which is a good position for us to be in. We will resume our regularly scheduled monthly finance meeting in July.
Okay, all good. Thank you. Next, we have the enrollment report, which I'm not sure where that's at or who's presenting on that. That's you.
The enrollment report is status quo. It remains the same. We still have commitments, 1,210 families that are here in August. The waiting list is growing, as you can see by the attachment that I put in the packet. So, we're in really good shape.
Okay, thank you. Next, we're going on to district reports. First up, we have leadership with Mr. Burrows.
Thanks. I'll keep this brief. Obviously, for parents, teachers, and the community, graduation testing, the arts festivals at the elementary and high school, and other end-of-year programs have been the focus of this month. I'd like to sort of specially shout out to Rachel Carpenter for her excellent organization of the graduation ceremony. Thank you, Rachel, so much for that. And to Aaron Jones and his team for the arts festivals that were presented at both, and Rachel again.
All of us.
She is, she is the Excel spreadsheet queen. For all the performances that were done, I was really grateful to be able to catch as many as possible. We did transition the suburban, which only would seat about eight people, to a new 15-seat activity bus that has arrived. It's being decalled and prepped and serviced. And so, the great thing about the 14, actually 14-seater, the driver in 14 seats, is that any teacher can drive this particular bus without a special license. So, it means when it's time to take students to a special activity, you can drive it as long as you're an employee of the district. We have some summer arts activities that we've entitled Art School, that have a range of dance, music, theater, and visual arts instructions for kindergarten through 12th grade, and you'll see some of that information a little bit later. Beth Scott, who had a family emergency just recently, has won't be able to make a presentation during the course.
I'm doing it for her.
Okay, so you're doing it. She and her team have put together a draft operational plan for special education that has been developed and proposed positions that will need to be sourced, but I think we're in a good position. And we're just waiting in moments from the state for finally getting out of our corrective action plan for the last year. We've accomplished and succeeded in meeting all the needs of the state, so our special education corrective action plan is just about over. A survey to parents, teachers, administrators, and community members will be sent soon through Need to Know. That's the way that I communicate with folks, so when you see Need to Know, that's actually coming from our offices. Regarding input for the third wave of, it's called the American Relief Plan, the Emergency Elementary and Secondary Education Act, the very first year, we had about, about $180,000. This year, we have about 360, this coming school year, 360,000. But what's really a big input for, for parents and community members and teachers is that S R 3, as they call it, is $831,311.90. And so, we're sending out this survey to you to inquire of you, what do you think should be the priorities for the expenditure of those funds, given the guidelines that the state and the federal government does. Look for that. Victor will help us put that together, and I hope that you'll take the time to fill out that survey, which will help us guide our thinking in terms of that substantial amount of money. The important thing about those funds are that they are one-time, so we don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we obligate ourselves to something that we have to pay many years after, but really focus on the things that we need to. Lost learning through the COVID period, facilities upgrades, any number of other activities, and you'll see that in this survey. So, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Next, I have child nutrition and cycle reports with Debbie.
Yes, thank you. My report's not funded by the state. The Cycle 7 is in process. Those of you that are not familiar with cycle reporting, there are nine times a year that we submit reports to the state that go through every aspect of our data. This month, we are in really good shape. I'm waiting for semester grades to be entered, so I can work on the second half of that report. So, we are in good shape with that. I'm also working on the funding data reporting, due to the Arkansas Department of Education on June 15th. I've been pulling data, just like the different reports for that one. It looks at the home districts of our students, how many students we have in each of the surrounding districts, what their poverty level is, and what their study accommodations are as well, and it also asks our projected enrollment for next year. The third aspect is child nutrition, the renewal packet. I'm working on that contract with the state as well. It goes through our provider, Airmark, and details that. I've signed up for the Child Nutrition Director's Conference at the end of the month. Pant plans are being finalized for our summer feeding program, so if you'd like to spread the word, like we did at Spring Pride, we'll be offering meals to anybody in the community aged birth to eight months. So, they can come and pick up meals once a week. That includes seven breakfasts a month. And that's also available to our students as well. Sorry. I'm excited to share with the board that my year-end budget balance for child nutrition will be approximately $30,000. That's an improvement over any of the past few years. So, that's gone really well. And closing out the month, I will be submitting our facilities inspection reports to the state. I'm waiting for some independent contractors or outside contractors to see any of their inspections of our fire equipment, fire extinguishers, kitchens, and such. And all those reports go to the state, and that's how we get our facility money that's distributed throughout the year. Are there any questions? No, thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Next up, health and wellness with Katie Milligan.
So, our district has fewer than five in quarantine and zero in isolation. We had eight cases of COVID-19 in the 2020 and 2021 school year. Right now, 75% of our staff are fully vaccinated, and today was completed the second shot clinic. We're around 75,000 received their second dose of the virus COVID vaccine and another 10 received their third.
Can you give me that percentage of staff one more time? I'm sorry.
75% of staff. I'm hopeful that the cases continue to drop, that we're able to begin the 2021, 2022 school year in a better position than when we started this school year. I really want to express my gratitude to our staff and our principals for all of the hard work that went into this year. I am not a teacher, but I have listened to our teachers and know that this year was made especially difficult, given the guidelines that they were deliberately to follow to keep our kids safe and keep themselves safe and healthy, and I'm proud to work on it.
Thank you, Katie. Next up, elementary school report with Mr. Young.
Yes, the arts festival at K-6 went very well. It was amazing to see the talent of our students. I think some of our art teachers are here. Your art teacher, Ramon Wavy, he's still a teacher at K-6. And thank you all for attending that amazing night. Fun and field day is underway. We created church, the E team, six kids away. Yeah, I just don't know what that was, but that's our day. We have day two tomorrow. Woo! A special event to be conducted in the Rogers Fire Department, helping that be a very special event. Sixth grade graduation, it is Thursday evening at 7:00 at the beautiful outdoor stadium, K-6. And kindergarten graduation is going to happen, not once, not twice, not four, but five times throughout. Probably the last day of school, so that will be a very special time. And then, Ms. Albright, this is the yearbook that happened. Ms. Albright did not start the year with us, but she came in and embraced the yearbooks, which a lot of people don't embrace. So, her, the fifth and sixth grade, they're going to master these, so we look forward. You heard about that. And in looking toward the future, we have 572 students ready for school next year. 13 of these students will be virtual, and we have a waiting list for all grades. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? No, thank you.
Can we acknowledge one more? My, I see the people that graduated at the top there. We give them. Oh, oh, get back up. And we do have, you know, probably, I'm tired of everybody involved yet. I would like all of our other students to stand up. All of our other diamonds, stand up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Young. Next up, we have student council report with Mr. Aguilar.
He graduated, and it's about 10 days away from going to the airport, so there will be no more switchy eager.
Aww. Yay!
Okay, next up, we have arts integration with Mr. Jones. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I skipped right over Heather. I'm sorry. Heather, high school report, my fault.
It's okay. It's a hard act to follow. All right, we wrapped up graduation last Friday. Had 83 students graduate, with 15 graduating class, and we're currently completing final projects for all other students on campus. We'll be finishing this school year with awards and end of year field day at Lake Atlanta, so a lot of fun to finish what has been a very interesting year. Our course request has been submitted, and we're currently in the process of building a schedule for the 2021-2020 school year and building student schedules from the master. I want to thank everyone who's been out to support our students at one of the many, many performances that has occurred in the past month. I'm pretty sure I just lived here. And we hope to see you at those performances next year. The event calendar is already taking shape, so you can start scrolling through the public calendar to figure out when things are happening and make plans to be here. And then finally, I'd like to announce our teacher of the year for 2021. So, this comes from the teachers of the month that were nominated and selected each month and then voted on by the wider community from that very narrow pool. He's a first-year teacher, and has managed to create two wonderful and hilarious theater performances in the middle of the pandemic and keep those kids acting and active. So, Jordan Haynes is our teacher of the year.
Excellent job at graduation. That's just a compliment.
Yeah, very well run.
And festivals, thank you.
Yeah, very well run, both of you guys. Good job. Okay, now we'll move to arts integration with Mr. Jones.
Yay! So, let me start with partnerships. So, during this crazy pandemic, and I know we are ready for a new year, it sounds like we are having museums that are open. We have nine different collaborating, collaborative, that's a new one, partners that we have with museums throughout the region. So, our programs are a bit, hopefully are going to be coming back. We've missed this entire year, especially a night at the museum, things that we did with Crystal Bridges, not being able to perform, not being able to have our core teachers to have those kids in the galleries, talk about making those connections. It's all going to come back, so I know we're very, very excited about that. And thank you to teachers represented from kindergarten through 12th grade, working with us as a team to meet with these directors. In fact, we just got off of Zoom with Tiffany Harris, who's the new school programs director. And so, we had a wonderful group of teachers who let her know how proud we are of our programs. We don't want to see those disappear, so thank you so much for that. Tomorrow, 7th grade is going to Little Rock. So, Ms. Culbrot, I tell you, I love working with this woman. She is taking these kids all the way to Little Rock because they have been reading The Warriors Don't Cry, autobiography account of Melva Patoelo Beal, civil rights movement leader of Little Rock Nine. So, we will be spending the entire day there and coming back, so if you have a 7th grader, be here at 7:00 to pick them up, please. All right. Along with this, the 7th grade, Ms. Kerr's class recently had been doing and learning about, well, let me back up. We had a P D for our teachers, and so we ended up using relief printing. And from that, Ms. Kerr came up with this concept of wanting to bring awareness, maybe protest, maybe a couple of different things. We use printmaking for in-classroom, so they ended up writing the slogan, thinking of the cause, researching that cause, coming up with those words, and then using relief printing to then share that message. I've got a few here. They'll come up pretty soon. I know it's a faraway, but these are some pretty amazing words from 7th. Math and art, of course. Peter, butter, and jelly. Are you kidding me? That's just how they go. I am so happy to work with Mr. James Hobbs Taylor because he came up with this brilliant idea, and Mr. Jones, I have a fantastic concept and idea that I think we can just kind of replicate all over. You remember transformations? You remember talking about translation, reflection, and all these? So, you need to go back. I did. He helped me, and we combined it. So, another quick little kind of reference and call out to him with all of these kiddos of things that they're doing of integrating to make these really kind of strong connections between our core curriculum and our fine arts. And then, Mr. Singleton, I can't leave out Mr. Singleton. His classes have been working with his singer-songwriter class. Typically, we go to Crystal Bridges to go see the works in person, so we've been doing this virtually, that the students can then look at an artwork, do some research, and then compose an original work themselves. So, this is a song, not only the lyrics, but the melody, everything that they kind of compose of taking that research from a visual work of art, and they are turning out phenomenal. I'm sure he'll be making videos along with them, so look for those probably this summer sometime. Thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Next up, special education report with Mrs. Scott.
I'm standing here for Ms. Scott, representing. The special education team has been very busy the last, the past few months with annual reviews of student progress and making programming recommendations and plans for the 21-22 school year. The majority of our special education placement students are back on campus, with the exception of three resource students out of 24 and six speech-length students out of 33 at the elementary. We are still missing eight special education students out of 73 at the secondary level. I'm super excited for the learning that will get to take place when we're all back together in the fall. The special education budget is complete and turned in successfully to the state with the guidance of Bonnie, who is our financial advisor. I don't normally knew numbers, but she was able to provide excellent support during this process. Thanks, Bonnie. She has completed Cycle 7 reporting, which looked Sheila completed cycle seven reporting, which looked at the data information in East School for Special Education Programs. Uh, we had four errors that were corrected regarding exit dates from last year's students. Sheila has been working diligently on East School data information, and things are looking much improved. All components of the corrective action plan have been submitted. I spoke with the monitoring representative, and she said documents were looking good. I'm just waiting on the final correspondence to see the outcome. Excited to move forward with the special education team and maintain accurate records for our students so that our next monitoring will be a smooth process. And a shout out to Sheila because she did, uh, did an excellent job. Four errors on a cycle seven is excellent, so if you give it to her, please give her a pat on the back. And that's all.
Thank you, David. Uh, next item I have here is Medicaid RIF, which shows no report, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, so we will go to human resources with, uh, Terry.
Hey, good morning, everybody, or good evening, not morning. Hey, just to let you know what's going on in H R, um, we've got all the employee agreements out. Um, we've got about eighty-two percent of those back signed. Um, so we still have a few that are out. We've also got eleven positions posted, job postings. Um, just to go over those, we have a high school secretary position, and we've gotten five applicants in, in on that. We've got an adjunct, adjunct digital art position. No applicants have yet, uh, for that position. We've got an eighth grade algebra position, we've got four applications in on that. We have an adjunct fashion costume design position, we've gotten two applicants. We've posted a seven through twelve high school teacher, which is arts slash academic. We've gotten twelve applicants on that. We've got a K through six teacher position, arts slash academic. We've gotten thirteen apps on that position. We posted a dean of students position, and we've gotten five applications on that. We have two social worker positions posted, and we've gotten two apps on that. We've also posted learning guides, we've gotten four applications. We've posted a special ed teacher, or, uh, yeah, a special ed teacher, teacher position, we've got five applications on that. We've also posted a bus driver full-time and a part-time position. We had three applications on that position, and we have, uh, success, successfully filled our bus driver positions. So we're really excited that we've gotten a lot of, uh, applications in on all these positions, and look forward to, um, interviewing. Um, principals should start their interviewing processes on a lot of these positions and start getting them filled. Besides that, in the human resource department, we're, uh, with Bonnie's help with A P S R C, we're running four payrolls this, um, this week. Um, we've successfully done one, we've got, gonna run another tomorrow, and then we'll run another one on, uh, Thursday, and then finish up on Friday to get everybody's payroll through July the thirtieth. So other than that, benefits, uh, is going good, and that's what's going on in human resource.
Okay, thank you, Terry, I do have one question, uh, really quick. Of the eleven job postings that you listed, uh, do you know how many of those are new postings? Meaning maybe new positions to the district?
Then, uh, the dean of students would be a new position. Our social, social worker would be a new position. Um, then I believe our. And everything else is just.
You cut out, what was the third one?
I'm sorry, learning guides.
Thank you.
Everything else are, are, uh, positions that are being, uh, they're not new positions, we're just filling them.
And there were two learning guides, is that correct?
Uh, we have, on our learning guides, uh, we have four applications.
No, I mean, how many openings?
I believe, I'm not really sure, I think we're gonna try, Rich can answer that, I believe there might be four.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, four to six. Uh, these are either teachers who currently work in our, uh, in the Art Academy, or outside people who are qualified to assist in, uh, learning loss, uh, for after-school tutoring and coaching, uh, for perhaps intercession and break, uh, coaching, and also to work, uh, in assistance during the school day for those kids who need it. So rather than call them tutors or coaches, which seems like it's a top-down kind of experience, we, we titled the positions learning guides, because they really are the ones that are with parents and with students to help them, uh, help them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Leslie, have you got a question?
I have a question, but I have a question before that.
Go ahead.
Um, a follow-up to what you were talking about, is that gonna be available at both campuses?
Oh, yeah.
And will it be available to all students, or do they have to qualify somehow?
Well, uh, I think we're gonna have to work with, uh, Matt and Heather to make sure that we're reaching the students who need the assistance the most, and then, uh, sort of expand based upon the number of folks that we have who can provide the service.
So they'll, so the principals will be deciding who gets the services?
Absolutely.
Um, and then the other question was the new, Terry, the new dean of students position, I'm assuming, and this may be a better, you may not be able to answer this, um, it may need to go to Mitchell Burrows or, or to Mitch Wright. Um, is that at the high school?
No, it's K twelve.
It's K, dean of students, it's gonna be paid for.
It's actually dean of support services, so it's professional development, assessment, to try and take, uh, the whole testing piece off Heather's plate, because she's been such a good citizen for that work in the, in the recent times. So it's really to assist with the direct instructional support and student achievement at the school site. And it's paid from S R, it's not from the operating budget.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Howard.
Um, Richard, do we know what the impact of the budget for next year for those new positions?
Zero. Well, I, uh, there's three hundred sixty-ish thousand.
Okay.
A good portion of it, you've already seen in the schools, which is Victor's good work, of about a hundred and thirty-four thousand, uh, improved technology in elementary classrooms, uh, and also here at the high school. So that was, that was an important piece of creating what, what goes on in the classrooms. And then, plus a hundred and thirty-four thousand is a series of positions to support student teaching.
Is that funding ongoing just for next year?
It'll go until two thousand twenty-four. Uh, so we're, we're in a good position to try and figure out if it does the work and can then disappear, or if we need to find funding to, uh, increase. So part of that is really a challenge to have a conversation with the state about raising our, uh, enrollment cap, because we're just about at the twelve-hundred seat mark, and the only way we can get bigger and better is if we have more seats for more students. And more seats and more students means that there's a budget that can support the baseline of what's going on. That's a much longer conversation, and, uh, that, because we have a plan for going through a conversation with administrators and staff all next school year, which I've, uh, discussed with them. I've met with every faculty member and every grade level team and every department at the high school, having conversations about how we can build that, uh, expectation for the school district. So, uh, yeah, and that's all.
Okay, so my, my only comment there is probably to track those positions when we get to twenty twenty-four, when that funding goes away, but.
Sure, yeah, good point.
Absolutely.
The other thing, Rich, this is a point order, I think the board is supposed to approve any new positions added to staff.
That was a question I had as well.
Okay.
They were in the budget last.
They were in the budget, and that's what the, the board approved.
But they weren't presented.
Yes, they were. I'm sorry, yes, they were.
I believe they were.
Happy to share them again.
Thank you for the clarification, I just didn't know they were brand-new to show.
Next, they're coming soon.
Any other questions? If not, uh, we'll move on to our next item, which is athletics with, uh, Mr. Skelton.
Well, good evening, very short report. We were given information for our work session that we now, uh, coming up. And if we decide on a date, well, then we can, uh, you know, share information that we have. Um, I would ask that if you have a question, or that a particular question that you would like to have an answer for or documentation for, just sign that email, and then, uh, I can send it back through Mr. Burrows' back to you, so.
Yeah, one comment on that from the board, I know there are two or three of us, I believe, that are gonna be involved in that, and I think we're, it's looking like early July is when we're gonna be able to put that together. Yeah, confident we're gonna get a date.
I baked Cancun for a honeymoon.
Only on the now.
I, I speak from, uh, a people on the day, it will be the seventh of eight, uh, red sand will, will work in Birmingham. So it's in progress.
So I, I just asked Jeff if this was appropriate, but, uh, since David brought up, we are, and everyone is here this time, we're going to have a work session with the board and Mr. Skelton, and I assume Matt is gonna be there to come up with a concrete black and white athletics policy, because one of the issues that has occurred is that many things are happening, and no one is quite sure what they are. And every, there are no clear policies at this point regarding athletics, there's a lot of opinions. Um, and so the goal of the session is going to be to have clear guidelines, clear policies, so there is no gray area, and everyone knows what we're doing, and we're all on the same page, uh, with the goal of going forward with athletics programs. So hopefully, by the August board meeting, when school starts again, that policy will exist, we will approve it, and we can kind of put this drama to bed. Okay?
I'll probably write the question to, to, or email to me, which I think you brought up, and that's for them, and that's a good starting point for, uh, to, you know, start our work session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. Uh, see, that concludes the district reports. Next, we'll be moving on to new business, the first item being the COVID mask protocol, which I believe Mr. Burrows has some information for us.
Well, so I'll start there. Uh, some of you probably saw this sent out through me to know. Uh, apologies to Katie, we had long conversations about how to move into the next, uh, school year, since we're looking at a much improved, uh, uh, mask situation. We only have a hundred and eight cases in Benton County, uh, at this point. We didn't even make the list for high enough to be even called out. So this is all good news, and given the vaccination, uh, pieces, uh, that's great. So I thought we were in some agreement, and then this went out, and, uh, who was it that said, the high school students were throwing their masks in the, in the, in the air going, yippee, it's over. And I, I do want it to be over for them, because it's just been such a, uh, such a piece. So the, the, the actual protocol, which, uh, will, the board will need to approve is, the school and district protocol is that wearing a mask would be voluntary, uh, so that if you decide not to, you don't have to. If you decide that you want to continue to wear masks, um, that should be supported by all of your, uh, educational community, so no one gets dinged for continuing to wear a mask, because you don't know if they have family members who are immune compromised, or even if you are a teacher who is immune compromised and want to have that additional, uh, protection. Uh, we'll continue to perform the additional and comprehensive sanitation practices, and I think temporary, uh, temperature checks only if we think it's necessary and indicated.
Only if they come to help.
Okay, and only if they're really obviously not well. And, and we just continue to say that anyone who is ill should just go home and return when they're, when they're recovered. Uh, for visitor protocol, which is not something we can handle so particularly well, because these are not people that we know, uh, that, that, uh, some people who come in as visitors will continue to wear a mask and some will not. But as a matter of privacy, no one in the school district will ask if they've been vaccinated, because that's just a privacy issue and not for us to, uh, invade for them. Uh, and that will not be allowed to ask that question, and no exceptions. So with that said, if you're a visitor who comes to the district or to a school site for a small group or an individual meeting, or for a conference, uh, we encourage that if you'd like to have that extra measure of, of confidence or protection in your immediate surrounding, that all you have to do is ask those folks that you're meeting with, uh, will you please put a mask on? And we, we should all of us be willing to do that, uh, in order to meet their expectations and needs. So that's fairly much the, uh, the proposal moving forward. Uh, it would be great if we could have this policy in place before we do our summer program. And I think the theater teacher said, it would be so great if we could actually talk, uh, and speak theater, uh, experiences and a play without talking to a mask. So, uh, that's the proposal before the board at this particular moment.
Okay, is there a proposal as far as the effective date?
Well, uh, I think we had made a commitment to finish throughout the school year, so this is just a few days away. And so, uh, pretty much once the school year is completed, uh, if we can have the policy start before the summer activities program, uh, that would be really great. Otherwise, we could wait until, uh, August fourth for the opening of school.
And what is the first day of the summer activities program?
June fourteenth.
Okay, so do we need to quickly?
If we do that.
Craft a resolution that the masking policy has emailed will go into effect?
If this is the masking policy.
Right.
You think is appropriate, you could simply make a motion and it could go forward.
Okay.
On June fourteenth.
Are there copies of what the policy, the proposed policy is?
Yeah, it should be. Am I the only one that has it here?
It was in your package.
It was in the packet, I saw it when, when that came out, but I didn't see.
I believe it's online or through.
That's what, that's what I thought, I didn't know if it was the same thing.
And Victor added to it, that pending board approval.
Okay, I would just want to ask too, is this what Katie is proposing? And, and I, if you're comfortable answering that.
Sure. Um, I think we need to make sure that we know legally what we can do. Um, because I know that there was a bill passed in April, but I know there was a question as to when it actually became effective. Um, because I've heard ninety days from when legislation recessed, but then I heard that it was also effective because the end of the school year, it was April, it was May, it was, I don't know when it's effective. When I read the bill, it doesn't state. So I want to make sure that we're following legally what we should. Um, but also my concern about it is simply asking legal mask is asking all staff to comply with that without discussing that with them. And if they have been vaccinated, based on CDC guidelines, they don't have to, that's the earth that has to believe. They don't have to wear a mask. And I don't want them in an awkward position being asked by a visitor, will you please put a mask on? And we're placing a position to say, well, I am vaccinated, when they shouldn't really have to disclose that.
Well, I did say in the policy that it wasn't large group experiences or classrooms. It was if you're coming for an individual or small group conference, and you're compromised, to ask, uh, our employees to wear a mask, if they're, if that's something that's important.
Sure, but I still think it places that teacher in that space. If it's survival for me and I, we, we will keep masking.
Well, that's why we're here.
Yeah, I would agree, I think in most of the policy that I've seen, and Kara, I'd be interested in your opinion as well, but most of the policy that I've seen, um, it hasn't addressed that, that element as far as what to do when someone asks you. I think it's more of a common courtesy, you know, if someone asks you, we keep a mask and we put it on. I'm not sure that it necessarily needs to be included in a policy, but what would you, what are your thoughts?
I mean, you know, I think that at some point, we have to trust science and follow the CDC guidelines. Where it gets tricky is, um, finding that intersection between privacy and CDC guidelines. You know, um, I think one thing you could do is differentiate between regular school day activities and special meetings. Um, and, you know, if we want to say going June fourteenth, we're no longer gonna require people to mask. They can choose, um, you know, during regular school activities, we're not gonna require it. If a small group activity is occurring that's not a regular school activity, and someone who is specifically immunocompromised as a transplant recipient, that kind of thing, um, request masking, I, I think it's appropriate for us to do that as kind humans. it's appropriate for us to do that as kind humans. You know, so.
Do we have any idea what the other, what the other schools?
I don't. Anybody know?
Oh, which schools have lifted their masks?
Or what, if there's any policy?
I thought it was Rogers and.
Rogers has listed this.
Right.
Rogers and someone else. But I also looked at the list of those who've continued their mask policies through the end of the school year. Alma, others, there's about equal number of those who've continued to keep their mask policies in place as those who have lifted it. Just really trying to figure out a forward motion.
I don't know that I agree with the, that no one would disclose their vac, that you be asked to disclose your vaccination status. I just went through that with the company that I work for, and I know we can ask that. We can choose that that's an option if you're going to attend our event. So I don't know that that's necessarily the law. I think that we need to look into that.
There is definitely a privacy issue there when you're talking about private health informa, or patient health information.
There is, but it's also, it also can, I mean, I'll have our attorney look at it and.
I mean, I could ask. I could ask you. You don't have to tell me.
I think we need to ask for more.
But I, we want to have a policy that we're going to ask everyone if they've been vaccinated for, in the situations. I'm not sure we want to go.
How far does that go? Do we go into HIV status and other things as well? Hepatitis?
It's really, it's essentially the same.
It is, absolutely.
From a, from a, from a legal standpoint.
So just for a point of clarification on my end, I'm trying, I'm having a hard time deciphering the difference between a small group of individuals coming in and asking us to wear a mask and we'll, we'll put it on, versus a parent or a student who has the same problem. So if our policy is, we don't require masks, I don't think we should, it doesn't make any sense to me anyway, to ask, to have a small group be able to ask that, and then we have to comply to that. So I think that we, and I'm not a doctor, it just doesn't make any sense to me. So I think we should talk through that, but I don't, it just doesn't make sense to me.
I don't think this is a policy. I think this is more of like.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't get it, we need to hear it. But I didn't hear anything about Burrows. He said, he said, my, what I heard was they decided we're vaccinated.
No, I don't, I don't think anybody said that the kids could decide. Really, we're, we're.
By the side, they wear masks.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is really.
Is that in the poll?
No, this is addressing really as the building. When you're, when you're at an Arkansas Arts Academy campus, is, is the, is the school itself going to require everyone who walks in the building to wear masks or not? As far as the, you know, a parent and a kid, and if the parent wants the kid to wear that mask, that's a conversation within, within the family.
So there's a complication to come up in another district.
Okay.
I, I don't, I.
My decision to provide, to affect the whole, and that's a real, real issue. A lot of places. We're not, we, we put that aside.
I would, I would worry that our kids who aren't eligible for vaccination yet, just how that would affect them if we, because they're going to, they're not, they're supposed to follow the rules. And so if the rules are, you don't have to wear a mask, but maybe they need to wear a mask, how are we going to handle all that? Maybe Mr. Young, if, I don't know if you've had a chance to talk that over with Nurse Katie, or discuss the policy, but how does, how do you see it affecting the, the elementary campus?
I know that some of our students that are elect to be virtual are choosing that until they're vaccinated. So, you know, and I think, I think Katie's always great at, you know, it's June, we're going to hear a lot more things about August, you know, learn a lot. I think it's a great news for us that we got Katie, and she keeps on top of the CDC guidelines. And, you know, as long as we have, we're leaving our decisions, I mean, some people are not being.
Well, I recently heard that CDC is coming out with guidelines, more guidelines in the next couple of weeks, specifically about this particular issue. So the advantage of having this conversation before all of you and through our listening community is that it sort of catch up the stage for figuring out what the final decision will look like. I'm hoping we can be maskless as a, as a district as soon as possible, so we can feel the normalcy of being back. We also have to recognize that not everybody's vaccinated, that not everybody is in the same health situation as others. And so really, if you leave it to parents to make the decision about whether or not their children should be masked or not, then we should respect that.
Nate, you had a comment?
I was just going to suggest that we, I was just asking Dr. Riley if she could work with Nurse Katie and Matt Young and Heather to figure out what, what would the best resolution be to this, to make sure that we're following whatever laws or guidelines are produced from the state and or federal CDC. So I think we all have differences of opinion on this, but I think we want to do what's right for the kids, what's right for the district, whatever the safest thing is, right? So I'm just asking, Dr. Riley has agreed to that. So if you guys could connect together, and for next month's meeting, bring this back up, even if we have to have an emergency meeting, we could, but school's going to be out, right? So I feel like we should do that, if everyone's agreed to that.
It sounds kind of like a motion.
Is that a mo, yeah, a motion.
There we go. Motion, motion.
That makes sense.
Okay.
So is the mask mandate going to continue through our summer program then? Is that what you're saying?
Well, in a, wait, two weeks.
Does that start next?
Go ahead.
Well, whenever the next, the next meeting is, yeah, we'll just propose that.
I think, I think we can task Katie and Dr. Riley and Heather and Matt with, with being, with, with treating this as an urgent matter. So they can, they can give it the attention that it needs, so we can get back together sooner than two weeks, maybe over a Zoom and do something virtually to approve it.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Motion.
Motion.
Second. Any, all in favor?
Motion to table.
And for Dr. Riley and Nurse Katie to have a conversation and work through that.
I'm going to one point of order. I don't think we're allowed to vote remotely anymore. I think we have to vote in person now.
That's true.
Okay.
But we have a quorum, so.
For the, for the vote of the.
The Zoom thing expires.
Of that. If we tabled this, he's saying, if we tabled this, waited four or five days and did a Zoom, we wouldn't be able to do that vote over Zoom.
Unless we get our waiver approved. We could try to get our waiver approved.
It's only been drafted, and so it takes over 35 days for that to be approved. And it would have to come back to the board anyway. Yeah.
Well, I'd like to make sure we do it right. If that means we get back together in person to approve it, so be it.
Yep.
So I think that's, let's, let's do it right. Let's treat it as an urgent matter. We task the four of you guys with that and getting back to us.
So for those of you listening, or those of you who are here, we worked with legislative offices to make an application for a waiver, so that we could continue to make and have board meetings virtually, that would allow for votes, because we get much better attendance through virtual meetings. And because our students come from three counties, the opportunity for people who are in Madison or in Springdale to come to our, our board meetings is less than those of you who live close by. So this, this is, it gives us an option of being able to have board meetings where we can vote virtually if necessary.
Okay, thank you. Next item we have.
There's also a lot of control who can be in the meeting.
I'm sorry, can you say it one more time?
There's also a lot of control who can be in the meeting.
There have been some meetings where people were held virtually and attendance was not opened up for the entire, entirety of meetings.
Victor, can you address that? Because I don't think that's exactly.
Every virtual meeting that we have held has been live streamed on YouTube.
Live streamed on YouTube, that doesn't mean we can attend and ask questions and address the board. I cannot, I'll only be talking to a screen. I'm not talking to the board.
All the meetings that I've been to, when they've been virtual, have had signups for speakers, and people have spoken online, live.
But that's before new business, so nobody has a chance to interject into the new business discussion, like the mask mandate, right? Next month, we can tell you what we thought about your decision last month, but there's no direct feedback on a virtual meeting.
We're being, we're supposed to be held in front of masks.
And when you're supposed to get done on Friday before Tuesday evening to talk about something, that doesn't give people the opportunity to turn up.
Yeah, and I believe the, the purpose, and I'm, you know, new to this role, so take this with a grain of salt. I'd be curious what Tony or Howard has to say. I believe the, the point of having public comment at the beginning is to allow for that. And then the remainder of the meeting is for us to be able to discuss these items and adjourn to an executive session if we need to. I don't believe it's, it's the proper form to have, honestly, to do what we're doing now. I could be wrong about that, but I believe that's correct.
True.
Okay. Next on, let's go to item B, which is AAA Summer Activities, again with Mr. Burrows.
So if you saw the agenda online, I just wanted to share with you that there are a number of activities over the next seven weeks. Patrick Salings is doing high school music theory and Latin world music here at the high school. Crystal McWilliams is doing stained glass workshops here at the high school. Amy Kessler is doing classical dance, cultural dance, and creative dance here at the high school and at the elementary. Joy Price, our valued visual arts teacher at elementary, is doing 2D and 3D elementary visual arts. Mark Shields, our elementary guitar teacher, is working with about 20 students over the summer. Not the whole seven weeks, these are all sort of staggered throughout. Amy Watson and Rebecca Schuster are doing an elementary choir and theater workshop combined. And our, our esteemed Erin Jones is doing museum studies for educators. So it's actually an opportunity for teachers who want to work with Erin in arts integration and museum studies can do as well. So I just wanted to share, this is a much expanded view of things that are being made available. And in a certain way, this is learning loss for kids who didn't get to come together to practice music, didn't get to come together to practice or rehearse dance, et cetera. It's, it's a real in-person live experience for the summer. And through Debbie's good work, for those who come to the program, in addition to the community members, there's breakfast and lunch for all of the kids who are attending for the seven weeks. So that's provided at no cost as well. Okay?
Any questions?
No.
Okay. That concludes the business that we had prior to our executive session. If there's nothing else for discussion, can I get a motion for us to adjourn into the executive session?
So move.
Second.
Now, for the executive session, I believe, we are going down the hall. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Everyone's welcome to stay. No guarantee in how long this, that'll take, but you guys are welcome to stay.
You're going to be in charge of the work.
It depends what the action is.
When you call a vote for adjourned to executive.
Oh, my fault. Okay. All in favor of adjourned to executive?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Debbie's keeping us in line.
I need some handholding in this, so thank, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Quick one you're going to be right there.
I know you're going to be late one night.
Sorry.
I just need you to sign the minute that it was approved tonight. Usually I have Tony do it, but.
Yep.
Hi. I didn't see you over there.
I'm coming here next.
That is not allowed.
I'm going to be before.
You were one of the brightest spots in my life when I was here. You're doing on mine.
Wow.
You're doing good.
Yeah.
Did you, you can go later.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
You have to do it before.
My granddaughter's in kindergarten, and she's so excited to find the fire truck. She's so, Danny Darnold.
Yeah, I tried to talk to her when she come in here, but.
Oh, me.
Trying to balance all the balls.
Yeah, yeah.
You got to fly out of the summer?
Ah.
Oh, man, I'm so jealous.
Airplanes are fun. You like roller coasters?
Oh, you love flying.
And I'm ready for the party.
Yeah.
It is. It's just like, you know how you're going on roller coaster, and you start out a little slow, and you get faster, and you're going, woo! That's exactly it. Your tummy kind of, your tummy goes, boo!
Yeah, you're in the him.
What?
I was watching you there on airplanes. How to get ready for them.
You know, it's probably one of those things. They just.
That's what they do.
Yeah.
We need to stop it.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to be there one day.
I thought we'd have one day.
Oh.
I think I'm crazy.
I know.
I'm going to be there.
Okay.
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 So.
I mean, I'm just like, if you can wake up like.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just like, if you can wake up like.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
I think you're.
Right, oh, how do you know?
I think you haven't heard that.
I think you.
Very important.
I mean, I'm just like, if you can wake up like.
Yeah.
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 I mean, I'm just like, if you can wake up like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, oh, how do you know?
I think you.
I didn't see you. I didn't see you.
I didn't see you.
I said that about.
Oh, yeah.
Those are not good.
Yeah.
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 So we've always held, um, that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
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 Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm worried.
I'm worried if people are going to.
I'm not sure if we'll be able to.
I'm thinking.
Are we live? Yeah, but ladies and gentlemen, on the live audience, we are going to mute the live stream for the moment and mute the recording until we come back from the executive session.